Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Newen House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton, can you help us with the flag salute?
Yes, please stand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, and of which all will be just as well.
And justice for all.
Thank you so much. We have three proclamation. The first one is Martin Luther King Junior Day proclamation, and Councilmember Hamilton will read that.
Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior devoted his life to the pursuit of justice, equality, and the creation of a society that values every individual's dignity and worth, reminding us that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, and that progress requires tireless effort and persistent commitment. And whereas, while Dr. King's work inspired monumental changes, many of the inequalities he sought to address, such as disparities in health, education, housing, and economic opportunities, persist and continue to challenge our collective progress toward equity. And whereas, Dr. King's vision of a fierce urgency of now serves as a timeless call to action, reminding us of the need for immediate and sustained efforts to create a just and inclusive society. And whereas, on Martin Luther King Junior Day, we honor his enduring legacy and acknowledge the transformative power of his leadership in advancing civil rights, dismantling systemic inequities, and inspiring individuals to stand against injustice and embrace service to others. And whereas, the city of Bellevue remains committed to fostering a community grounded in access, equity, and inclusion, recognizing that these principles are vital to building a beloved community envisioned by Dr. King. And whereas, Bellevue continues to celebrate Dr. King's life and work through meaningful events, including the annual local celebration and health fair at Crossroads Bellevue to be held on January 20th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and encourages residents to participate in the National Day of Service to honor his memory through action. Now, therefore, I, Dave Hamilton, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim January 20th, 2025, as Martin Luther King Junior Day in Bellevue, and call upon all residents to reflect on Dr. King's legacy, engage in acts of service, and join in the city's MLK Day events, and visit mlk.gov, I'm sorry, mlkday.gov, to discover additional opportunities to contribute to your community and beyond.
Thank you, Member. Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. We have Dr. Shirley Jenkins here. Is that right? Yeah, there she are. Come on up, from the Bellevue Alumni Chapter President, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Welcome. Right here. It'd be great to hear from you. And we have Dr. Linda Whitehead up here with us as well.
Good evening. Bellevue Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, is thrilled to accept this proclamation on behalf of our community and aware of how it signifies a profound cultural validation. This is not just a formality, but a meaningful acknowledgement of our cultural identity and contributions. It's a public recognition of our shared vision, heritage, achievements, and the positive impact we're making, which not only uplifts our community spirit, but also serves as an inspiration to continue contributing to our cultural richness. Accepting this proclamation strengthens the pride that Bellevue Alumni Chapter has when it comes to service in the community and encourages further positive action. I'd like to thank the City of Bellevue and Crossroads Mall for working with Bellevue Alumni Chapter in recognition of the MLK Junior Health Fair, raising awareness about important health issues that impact every individual, no matter how young or old, race, gender, or cultural differences. This health fair brings us all together, realizing we all have the same basic needs, and Bellevue Alumni Chapter is thrilled to have led this charge for the past 21 years. Our partnership with the City of Bellevue and its community is an important milestone and one worthy of preserving for the next 21 years plus. Thank you so much, and I'm humbled to receive this proclamation on behalf of Bellevue Alumni Chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and sit down, and we'll call you back up for a picture. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Councilmember Lee reading a proclamation on the National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And here to accept it is Constance Slappy, our Assistant Chief of Police in Bellevue. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas, the pervasive issue of human trafficking, which involves the exploitation of individuals through force, fraud, or coercion, and affects communities nationwide, including here in Bellevue. And whereas, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security estimates that millions of men, women, and children are trafficked worldwide each year, with thousands within the United States alone. And whereas, human trafficking can affect anyone, but it disproportionately impacts vulnerable groups such as abuse survivors, those in poverty or in stable living situations, indigenous communities, LGBTQ+ individuals, people with disabilities, and undocumented immigrants. Traffickers can exploit instability from natural disasters or conflicts, highlighting the need for equity and justice in anti-trafficking efforts. And whereas, Bellevue is committed to ensuring the safety, dignity, and freedom of all individuals, and our city supports efforts to educate the public, enhance awareness, and strengthen prevention initiatives to eliminate this highness crime. And whereas, the City of Bellevue emphasizes that everyone has the power to help make a difference in combating all forms of human trafficking by gaining knowledge to recognize, report, and fight these crimes. And whereas, during National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, the City of Bellevue encourages all residents to learn more about human trafficking, advocate for the rights of victims, and engage in meaningful actions to prevent and address trafficking in all its forms. Now, therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Bellevue, and urge all residents to join in the fight against human trafficking by raising awareness, supporting survivors, and promoting a culture of vigilance and advocacy to end this violation of human rights. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Bellevue, City of Bellevue.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Welcome, Assistant Chief Slappy. Thank you for being here tonight. We'd love to hear for you, from you.
We just want you to know that the Bellevue Police Department take human trafficking extremely seriously, and we want our citizens to feel safe, and we work very diligently in this effort for them to feel that way. So, on behalf of Chief Shirley in the Bellevue Police Department, we thank you for your support and for this proclamation.
Great. Thank you. Please stick around, and we'll do a picture together after the next proclamation. Okay, so next up, we have Korean-American Day proclamation read by Councilmember On.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas, the City of Bellevue is proudly home to a vibrant Korean-American community that enriches our cultural and economic landscape, with Korean being the third most spoken language in our city, symbolizing its deep integration into our diverse society. And whereas, over 2 million people of Korean descent reside in the United States, contributing their talents, traditions, and innovations to every corner of our nation. And whereas, Korean-American Day marks the historic arrival of the first Korean immigrants to the United States, celebrating their resilience, achievements, and profound contributions to our shared history. And whereas, this important day was officially recognized by the United States Senate and House in 2005, solidifying its significance and honoring Korean-American heritage. And whereas, Bellevue is fortunate to be influenced by Korean culture, from thriving business investments, particularly in technology, to the delightful array of Korean restaurants, shops, and bilingual education programs in our schools, including one of the nation's first Korean schools that remains a cornerstone of education and culture in our region. And whereas, the City of Bellevue takes pride in its diverse community and recognizes the remarkable role of Korean-Americans in shaping our city's identity, innovation, and cultural richness. Now, therefore, I, Janice Son, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim January 13th, 2025, as Korean-American Day in Bellevue to honor and celebrate the extraordinary contributions and cultural influences of Korean-Americans in our city and region. Let us come together in gratitude and celebration, united by the beauty of diversity that strengthens Bellevue and beyond.
Thank you, Councilmembers On. I don't believe we have anyone here to accept this tonight, so let us get our picture taken first with Dr. Jenkins and anybody else who's involved.
Can I get a motion to approve today meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And is no one to oppose? Mayor just left to grab some water. Oral communication.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This evening, there are three pre-registered speakers on our list. So before I start calling names, I will go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So the first is that oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. So people speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. And the presiding officer in both of those categories is authorized to give preference to those who have spoken, who have not spoken to the council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on items that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. With that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Joe Kunsler. Mr. Kunsler, can you hear me?
Thank you for calling me first. What a pleasant surprise.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you for your public service. I want to address your legislative agenda. I emailed to council a recommendation on improving the Public Meetings Act to find unfeasible comments that attack fellow Washingtonians' race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender expression, or mental, or physical, or sensory disability, as these remarks render orderly conduct of a public meeting impossible by devaluing our fellow citizens and attempt to dismiss or exclude those, their voices. Additionally, such hateful remarks have nothing to do with people's business. Obviously, I'm speaking about a certain Alex who constantly terrorizes you, and you deserve so much better than this. You really do. And you should also have the power to exclude him for 366 days. No one should be treated with hate when you come to a public meeting. It should be safe for all. And I just really think you should demand safety and inclusion in public meetings. I've tried to get this done before, haven't been so lucky. And finally, if I may, on a point of personal privilege, Mr. Zimmerman at the Kirkland City Council alleged I had Down syndrome. I don't. I have Asperger syndrome, very different, and I really resent and find hate. One reason why we need this legislation, because Mr. Zimmerman makes remarks about people's race, gender, and disability. I really don't appreciate stereotyping anybody or anyone, especially Down syndrome kids who are a thousand times more nicer than me. And I will hope then in future, Mr. Zimmerman will be kinder to you and to everyone. And if that doesn't work, that's why I would propose legislation for your legislative agenda. Thank you for your public service. I yield back to the ballot.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tika Smith. I can call the next speaker and then come back to you. And final speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihail, my dirty damn Nazi Gestapo antisemite fascist, and exactly Mayor Robinson, who mob boss. My name is Alex Zimmerman, President of Stand Up America. I support Trump for 10 years in every my election, and I candidate for Bellevue Council, and 24%, people vote for me, so I have responsibility. And I want to speak right now about something what is very unique, what is I can ever find this, you know what it means. Every communist and Nazi don't do it like this, like you do. This about Bellevue Police Commissioner, you know what it means? Four pages of rule. In these four pages of rule, don't have nothing about people can present. Is this exactly right now very critical? Because internet full right now, totally full. So Democrat is a mob, what is done accept different opinion. So it's not surprise me. So Bellevue Police, from my experience with 30-plus years, you know what it means, with Bellevue Police, acting like a Gestapo. When you cannot present and have opinion about Bellevue Police, they are acting like Gestapo. But it's different because Gestapo and KGB is official government, department, like FBI. But policemen, Bellevue policemen prosecute me five times, two cases now, all fabrication. Three cases before I win. I will win these two cases too, because it's a pure fabrication. Is this a critical what is we have right now? So I speak right now to everybody to listen to me. It's only one chance for stopping this Nazi fascist antisemite who sit in this chamber, all identical, totally clean this dirty chamber. It's exactly what is I support Trump from beginning, because us government right now acting like a bandita, like a mafia. Is this exactly very critical and very important? Council 30 minutes ago told me I supposed to be nice. I told them yes, no problemo. Change constitution, U.S. Constitution, state constitution, open Public Meeting Act. Where is a problem? Put word nice. Take word freedom of speech out, because nice is very good. I like be nice with you. I cannot be nice with this bandita mafia like you, a cockroaches. That's exactly who you are. So right now, viva Trump, viva new American revolution, and 100 million people who support this. We need stopping this Nazi pig totally. Thank you very much.
And our final pre-registered speaker is Tika Smith.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Tika Smith, and I'm the founder and president of BOSS, a nonprofit organization that is dedicated to empowering women and children in our community. I also have the honor of serving as an adult youth link board member where I support, where I work to support the voices and development of Bellevue's youth, young people. It is my privilege, Mayor, to present a copy of my first children's book, Emily Empowered. This story reflects challenges many young people face in overcoming adversity and finding the courage to embrace their unique strengths. It is my hope that Emily Empowered resonates with readers of all ages and serves as a source of inspiration to our youth, reminding them that they are capable, resilient, and empowered to make a difference. Mayor Robinson, your leadership and advocacy for Bellevue's families and communities have been a source of inspiration to me personally, and I thank you for your unwavering commitment to making Bellevue a place where everyone can thrive. Thank you all for your time and for your continued efforts in fostering a supportive and inclusive city. I look forward to sharing Emily Empowered with our community and continuing to create meaningful change together. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That does bring us to the end of our pre-registered speakers. I would ask if there's anyone else joining us this evening, either in person or online, who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Mr. Sergeant. If you could state your name for the record first, please. Thank you.
I wish to say that this is a wonderful new year, and there are also ugly things going on. And I appreciate the fact that no matter what you are faced with, you have diligently strived to do the best for the community that you've been elected by. I think that there's no doubt in my mind that anybody should be aware of that particular process. I want to make that perfectly clear, because I know that no one sits through these meetings as well as you do. And I've managed to participate in a couple of years of that. You are exemplary. There are times when you're faced with problems, and some of those problems are just verbal. Some of those problems are basically things that I've never experienced before. Some of the things I've experienced before, too. I appreciate your efforts and endeavors that you continue to do despite the fact that some of those things aren't very pleasant to other people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, I did not see any additional hands. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sergeant. We appreciate you sitting in the meetings with us. Appreciate your support. Okay, next up is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we have three study session items tonight. And so I'll let our city manager introduce the first one.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. So I'm very pleased tonight to welcome Dr. Kelly Aramaki, who is the superintendent of the Bellevue School District, and his chief of staff, John Harrison, tonight. As you know, the city and the Bellevue School District work in partnership to support and serve the children and families in our community. And we want to continue to foster that and grow that relationship to make sure that it remains strong. So tonight, Dr. Aramaki and Mr. Harrison are providing council and the public with an overview of some of the performance, performance metrics of the school district, including enrollment and a financial outlook. This is an informational update and a conversation. We're not seeking any direction from council tonight on this. And with that, welcome Dr. Aramaki and Mr. Harrison. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having us. Hello, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having us this evening. We're excited to give you an update on, on things happening in the Bellevue School District. I will start by saying it's an honor to be a citizen and to be working in the City of Bellevue. Every time I see articles or news stories about how Bellevue is thriving, particularly post-pandemic, I'm so proud, and it is truly a testament to the leadership of you here in the city. And so I just want to say thank you for your service to the City of Bellevue. And we, on the school district side, are working very hard to keep up with the work that you're doing on the city side, because we know that a lot of people move to Bellevue for the business, for the parks, for all the amenities. But many people also move to Bellevue because of the reputation of the schools, and they want the best future for their kids. And so our commitment is to continue to provide that for families who live here in Bellevue. Tonight, I'm just going to share a few updates with you. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the exciting things that are happening in the Bellevue School District. I'm also going to share some updates on our enrollment, because I know that enrollment has been an issue that people have been talking about for the past few years. And then I'm going to end by talking a little bit about the financial situation that, that we're in, that you may be hearing about as well. So I'll just share some of those things. And at the end, I think there's time for Q and A afterwards. So just to start off, let me see here. Bellevue has had a long kind of standing reputation of being an incredible school district. I mean, people have been talking about Bellevue for many, many, many years. And I will acknowledge that during COVID, things were very, very challenging. And I think not just in Bellevue, but across the country, people's confidence in public education was shaken, partly because of the amount of time that we were out of school and kids were learning from home. But for whatever the reasons, I think the public trust and faith in public education was challenged during COVID. And that was certainly true here in Bellevue. I want to say that during that time, during COVID, the majority of our teachers were heroes during that time. And we had teachers that were going to people's houses and were delivering materials to kids, teaching kids in their driveways. And so we saw some of the very best of teachers. But I do know that for many families, their kids really suffered during that time. And so since COVID, it has been a kind of a big push for us to rebuild trust in our community. I'm excited to say, you know, in 2023, 24, you know, Bellevue has always been at the top of U.S. News and World Reports. But again, in 2023, 24, all six of our high schools were rated in the top 30. And so Bellevue has come out strong, coming out of the pandemic, and we're very proud of that. But at the same time, we are striving to keep Bellevue on the cutting edge of education. So we, we never want to rest on our laurels. We know the education needs to keep up with the changing kind of economy. And so our work is to continue to innovate, and that is what we were doing in Bellevue. I'm going to share with you just some things that we're working on that are exciting for us. The first one is Bellevue has always had success with language learning. Puerta del Sol is, I think, one of the original language immersion programs in Bellevue, and has been popular, not just in Bellevue, but for families who are in the region. But building on that, we have kind of doubled down on this idea that we want all of our kids to be bilingual, bilingual. At a recent board meeting, I, one of the board members talked to me about, why is it that we're investing so much in this idea of bilingualism? And there's kind of three big things. One is, you all know this, but Bellevue is an incredibly diverse city, and language learning is a way to honor the diversity and the heritage of our kids and their families. And so that's one of the reasons. They're doing it so that kids can be proud of the languages that their families speak at home. The second reason that we focus on language is that the companies that are here in Bellevue are global companies. So a student can graduate, go to college, and then work for Amazon or Microsoft or any of the companies that are here in Bellevue. But the truth is, these companies are, for the most part, global companies. And so being able to speak one of these other languages, Spanish or Chinese, is hugely beneficial to their outcomes as an adult. And then the third reason we focus on language is that when you learn the language of somebody else, you learn to appreciate and love the culture of that person. And so it sounds cheesy to say, but learning languages of somebody else is a way to build peace between people. And so we do believe that we want Bellevue kids to graduate and go out into the world, making the world a better place, not just being successful and being able to provide for their families, which is in itself very important. But we want kids to be good people who are going to go out there and do good things by people. And so we believe that these language programs do that. And as you can see, we, last year, we started an Arabic program in Ardmore. This year, we started a Hindi program in Ardmore. We started Korean at Newport Heights Elementary. Our first graduating class in Chinese is this year, so we've been growing that Jingmei. Our first graduating class in Chinese is this year, so we've been growing that Jingmei to Tellicum to Newport. And then we're excited because in addition to Puerta del Sol, all of our Spanish dual-language programs at Stevenson, Lake Hills, Sherwood Forest, and then at Highland, they are now all designated as ESA programs. So all of the kids that go through any of our Spanish programs will get the International Spanish Academy designation, which is a huge thing for them. And then this fall, we're excited because we're going to be starting Japanese at Bennett. And so we already have 70 kids who have expressed interest in joining the program. We only have 40 slots, and so we're excited because people are very excited about that. So we are working on all of that. We have plans for, for bringing in other languages, like an American Sign Language, but we want Bellevue to be known as a place that is diverse and that we bring the diversity and excellence into our schools. Everybody's talking about career and technical education. It is so critical that our students have career-connected learning in schools. Coming out of the pandemic, our kids are basically not okay with learning status quo, and so we're committed to providing courses and education for kids that could get them into a job right out of high school if they want that, or that'll prepare them for going to college and, and jumping into kind of career-connected learning early. This year, we started a maritime welding class at Interlake High School, which is incredibly exciting. I don't really know exactly what they do, but I know that you can get a job right out of high school if you wanted to, if you know how to weld and swim at the same time. We also have this amazing construction horticulture programs at Interlake High School. I think in partnership with the city and some businesses, we created this incredible kind of outdoor, we call it a shed, but really it's big enough to build an entire tiny home. And so the kids learn how to build a house, these tiny homes, from, from the very beginning, and then they take that and deliver it to tiny home communities so that they can also learn about homelessness. Today, we were at Newport High School, the, the school board and myself, and we visited the Cisco Cyber Security Program, and those kids are getting job offers right out of high school, but most of them want to go to college. But we know that cybersecurity is an incredibly important thing for kids to study and know how to do, and we are preparing kids for that. Nursing program at Sammish, we're also completely invested in the arts, and so we, I mean, we teach costume design at Sammish High School. And then today, also at Newport, we got to visit the culinary program. I mean, back when I was in high school at Newport, it was kind of the home ec cooking class, but these kids are learning how to run a professional kitchen. Tomorrow, folks from Ascend Steakhouse are going to be there, and so these kids are learning about the whole culinary profession. And so we're preparing kids, whether they want to go to college or they want to go into an amazing career here in Bellevue. The Bellevue School District, we have a commitment to environmental sustainability. I know that the city does as well. We have students at Tellicum that are working with Sound Transit to look at the impact of light rail on the beaver population in Bellevue, which I didn't realize we had beavers in, in Bellevue, but I guess we do, and so the kids are kind of working on policy writing to see like how they can help protect the environment while, while promote environmental sustainability with our Sound Transit. But in addition to that, we're so thankful to the voters in Bellevue because our voters support education. They support the building of the very best facilities for our kids, and as you can see, every building that we build in Bellevue is more and more energy efficient and environmentally sustainable. Puerta del Sol Elementary is our, our latest building and is the first net zero school building in the state of Washington, and so I, I was able to climb up on the roof. The entire roof is covered in solar panels. All of the outlets are smart outlets. The HVAC system is completely run by computers, so it's able to make sure that it's the most efficient while providing the best air quality for kids, but it has this kind of ground-sourcing energy system that sends the air down into the ground and then back up. And so the teachers can literally turn the heat on as high as they want to because the building produces more energy than it consumes. And so we're continued to continue, we're committed to continuing to invest in buildings that, in the long run, cost us much less to, to operate than, than our older buildings. We have just incredible innovation in the field of rocketry and robotics. I mean, Bellevue is, and the east side is kind of the center for aerospace, and that's a picture of our Newport High School team. They came in second in the world. It was like Japan, England, and Newport High School were there in the top three, and so we're proud of them. They were only topped by Odell Middle School about five or six years back that came in first in the, in the world for rocketry. And so Bellevue has a legacy of incredible rocketry programs, and we're excited to continue to support rocketry. And then some of you joined me at the steamnasium launch, but we opened up in the old Puerta del Sol building in the Mont Haven neighborhood. We took that building, which we're no longer using for our school, and created this incredible steamnasium so that our first robotics teams, which we have one for each of the high schools, can practice and compete with each other to prepare for their robotics competitions. But we do feel that these STEM fields are critical for our kids, and then the idea of athletics, our activities for kids, is so critical because activities give kids not only the opportunity to learn, but to be in community with each other. Innovation and online learning. So we have a digital school that students from anywhere in the state of Washington can attend. So we have, it's a statewide enrollment. Kids in eastern Washington can attend our digital program and graduate with a Bellevue diploma. We're excited about it because when you attend the digital discovery, you can take any of the languages that we offer in the Bellevue School District. You can take any AP classes. We have incredible online offerings, but we also offer coaching by Bellevue School District teachers. So teachers meet with students every single week to make sure that they're on track. That is a picture of Angela Zhang. She is a almost professional golfer, and so many of the students that are in our digital discovery are soon to be professional athletes. They are competitive in their fields, and then being in a digital school allows them to learn while they're at Pebble Beach, getting ready to compete. So we're excited to be able to provide that. This coming fall, we are going to start a parent partnership program that's part of our digital discovery so that families in Bellevue who choose to homeschool their kids can have access to any of the digital library that we have, any of the digital classes, and they can have access to any of the teacher mentors that we have in digital discovery as well. So there's a, we have a number of families who choose to homeschool their kids, and this is an opportunity for us to partner with them. We are co-designing this program with our homeschool families. All this to say, you know, coming out of COVID, I know you've heard that we've had challenges with enrollment. The birth rates, not just in King County, but up and down the west coast, are going down, and when birth rates are declining, enrollment in schools decline. And so you can see, our height of enrollment was about 2018, 2019, and then 2020, it started to come down, and then it really came down after COVID. But our focus has been to manage our enrollment by creating innovation and programs that our kids and families want. And so you can see there that our enrollment has grown from 2022, the low of 2022, the past two years. So we're excited to see that kids are coming back. This just shows you our enrollment by cohort. So what this chart shows you is we have more kids in middle and high school than we do in elementary school, so that's kind of a common trend for us. However, the black bars are last year, and then the yellow, blue, and green bars are this current year. And so you can see, at almost each cohort, we have more kids this year in the grade level than we did last year. More importantly than that, our cohorts grow as they get older, and so kindergarten last year is smaller than first grade this year, and so we get more kids in first grade. And so each cohort, they might start out small, but they grow over time. Part of that is because, and I'm going to talk about this in a minute, but housing is so expensive in Bellevue. So for young families with little kids, it's expensive and it's hard to find a place that they can afford, but as families build up equity, you can see that more and more families are able to move in. It goes down a little bit at 11th and 12th grade because some of our students choose to go to running start. So we do promote running start as an option for kids who want to try to earn their AA degree before they graduate from high school. As far as elementary schools go, a couple of years ago, you know, we went through the consolidation process to try to right-size our elementary schools. Two years ago, two to three years ago, more than half of our elementary schools were smaller than 400. Some of them were smaller than 300, and the state funds elementary schools at a baseline of 400 kids. So if you have less, you get less money. And I was talking to some Bellevue business people, and it's similar as how business people look at their buildings. If their buildings are under rented, you just are losing money, and so you have to have a, kind of, a level of, of spaces rented in order to, to make money. And for schools, it's similar in that if our buildings are empty, we don't get funding for those students. We can't fund counselors, nurses, teachers, principals, and things like that. This is a good new slide because what this shows you is, this year, almost every elementary school is above 400. We only have three, Phantom Lake, Ardmore, and Sherwood, that are smaller than 400, but we're, it's promising for us because in the Ardmore Sherwood Forest neighborhoods, I think some of that is redmond, they are planning for some more affordable housing, so we are expecting those two, two schools to grow in enrollment. Somerset you can see is an outlier, but we really, a lot of families this year moved into the Somerset neighborhood, and so they are our largest elementary school at over 700 kids. This just shows you a picture of middle school enrollment. The only thing I'll highlight about that is we've been talking about middle school consolidation. Last year, I put a pause on that conversation just to see how enrollment would grow or change. What this kind of shows you is our middle school enrollment is stabilizing, and so we're very happy about that, and if it continues with this trend, then we won't have to consolidate a middle school. And so families have asked me to communicate that as soon as possible because I think for families that have fourth and fifth graders, there's a nervousness about whether we're going to consolidate a middle school. But here you can see, if you look at the yellow-green bars, that's this current school year. Look at Highland, for example, 548 kids that are in district, and that little green bar is out-of-district students. So Highland Middle School went from 23 out-of-district kids last year to 43 out-of-district kids this year. So students from out of the district are helping stabilize our middle schools as they are our elementary schools. I'll show you a little bit more data about out-of-district students in a second, but we, we do, some of our stabilization of enrollment is because of the kids that are coming from outside of the Bellevue School District. This shows you out-of-district enrollment from 2020 to this year, and you can see in 2020, 21, we had 637 kids who lived out of the Bellevue School District boundaries. That's compared to 1,327 students this year who live outside of the Bellevue School District boundaries. So we have really grown in how many kids are coming from outside of the Bellevue School District. And in, in many ways, those are the students that are helping stabilize our enrollment. It's not so much families who are moving to Bellevue, but it is kids that are coming from around, and a lot of those kids are coming into our border schools, like Ardmore has some of the highest numbers of out-of-district students, Lake Newport Heights in the south end. Kids are coming to the Korean program, to the Arabic and Hindi program, but in addition to that, we allow students who start at elementary school to stay in the Bellevue School District all the way through high school. So if they come to one of our under-enrolled elementary schools, they get to go from Newport Heights to Taiyi to Newport High School, and Newport being one of the top 10 schools in the state is a huge draw for families. I'll just point out, 1,327 kids, that's the size of a high school. That's the size of three elementary schools. That's the size of two middle schools. I mean, it's a lot of kids, and it's provided stability for us. So we're not using out-of-district kids to grow the district so much, but we are using out-of-district enrollment to help stabilize our system. Just a quick note about affordable housing, workforce housing. I know that this is a priority of the council, which we 100% support. There are 120 students who are living at Polaris, and so I know that the city council has been big in supporting affordable housing, and I'll say that we have 10 times the number of students that, that live in affordable housing than live in non-affordable housing. That is a huge difference. This is more than the kids that live in the Spring District. So all of those units that were built that are at 100% AMI, they just don't draw families. But here, this is 80% AMI, we've got 120 kids. I mean, it is part of our enrollment bump this year, unexpected, is that we had so many kids that are living in the Polaris. And so this is just my way of saying, we, we support your efforts to build affordable housing, workforce housing in the city of Bellevue. I've talked to people at Overlake Hospital. I think that workforce housing is, has a possibility of supporting nurses, our firefighters, our policemen, and our teachers, and so we would encourage you to keep doing that work and to partner with us. There are opportunities to consider using some of Bellevue School District property to look at workforce housing, and so I think some of that is great potential into the future. This is just another slide about out-of-district students. I don't need to belabor the point, but the last two bars, you can see what it would look like if we didn't have any out-of-district kids. So we have 19,331 kids this year. It would be down to 18,000 if, if we didn't have kids from out of the district, and so when those kids come, they bring with them the state funding that comes with them. Quick things about our budget. This is a graph that shows Washington State funding. So the two lines together are 100% of whatever the state funds, and so the green bar, the green line is public education funding in Washington State. The blue line is the funding of everything else that Washington State funds. And so you can see that up until about 2018, the state spent more money on everything else than, than public education. But McCleary kicked in 2018, so from 2018 to 2020, 2021, you can see that the state's funding for public education actually surpassed the funding of everything else. We were at 52% of the state's budget. And then since then, I think the main point of this is that public education funding has kind of flattened out somewhat while the funding for everything else has increased. And when you think about how much more expensive everything is costing the state, the city, it is certainly true for public education, and so this is a key driver for the, the funding issues that the Bellevue School District is facing right now and into the future. This image just shows you kind of where our funding gaps are. The left side is special education. So if you take a look at that, the green bar is how much we get from the state for our special education funding. The blue bar is how much we spend. So in 2024, this past year, the state gave us about $40 million in funding for our students with special needs. We spent $74 million, and so that gap of $34 million or so comes from the local levy. And you can see, we, we overspend what the, what the state gives us by a lot, and a lot of that is because we value our students with special needs, and we are willing to fund the things that they need to be successful in school and then when they graduate from school. But that is not sustainable. We're able to use our levy dollars to do that, but because the costs of everything else are going up, it is, we're, it's becoming harder and harder for us to do that. The, the center is material supplies and operating costs. This is just maintenance costs for what things cost to run the school district, similar to, to that of the city. This is to pay for things like fuel, insurance, materials, curriculum, and you can see in 2024, the state gave us $29 million. We spent $37 million. Everything post-pandemic has gotten so expensive, food prices and everything, and the state funding for those things has not kept up. And then transportation, 2024, the state gave us about $6.8 million. We spent about 10. The way that the Mercer Island Superintendent explains it is, the state provides you enough money to get your kids two-thirds of the way from home to school. You've got to figure out how to get your kids the, the last one-third of the way, and there's no way we wouldn't pay for transportation for kids, and so we are forced to kick in that money. These are just three categories, but if you imagine this across all of the categories, you can see where we have an issue with, with funding for schools. We could certainly reduce our, our spending and cut things down to bare bones education, but the reality is Bellevue families expect the very best in education. We're not competing with other school districts. We're competing with the private schools here, and so we- And so we have to have the funding to support the services and and programs that our our families expect when they come to Bellevue. This is just an example of our ending fund balance. We've done a lot of learning over the past couple of years about ending fund balance. And the main thing you should just see is that downward sloping line is not a good sign for us. We we cannot continue to carve into our ending fund balance. It's dropped down to eight million dollars, which is below. Our fund balance really should be at about thirty million dollars for us to be able to pay our bills every single month. I think one of the points that Phil Block, one of our school board directors, made at a board meeting was the school district is not in the money-making business. So our job is to spend what we get from the state and from our levy. But this is not that. This is we are outspending what we are bringing in. And so we have cut into our fund balance. And this year, eight million is the lowest we can go. And so we must cut our spending by. Here it shows last year's overspending was about ten million dollars. We're we have to cut ten million from this current year's budget, and we're looking at a sixteen million dollar deficit for twenty-five, twenty-six. This is my last slide. I don't want to end depressing. So what I'll say is the school board has asked me as a superintendent over the past couple of years to to do two things. One is to manage the enrollment and finances, to get us back into a good fiscal standing, but to at the same time, to not make cutting a budget kind of the driving narrative in the district. And so we have been striving to be innovative. We want to be the very best school district, not just in the state, but in the country. This year, we were designated the the best school district in the state by NICH, which we're very proud of. And so that's our commitment. Our commitment to the the community of Bellevue is to to make sure that this school district matches the excellence of the city and that it continues to be a place where families want to send their kids. So with that, that is my presentation, and we will, if we have time, open it up to questions.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So Councilmember Stokes, let's start with you.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to say right at the beginning, I can think of no one better to champion these difficult conversations we are having and will have than Dr. Aramaki and his staff.
Thank you.
I'm really grateful for your leadership and collaboration at a time of growing student support needs and higher operation costs. Over many years, I fought for investments for our students in in both to close opportunity gap through service in PTA, Bellevue School District before I came here, and working here and seeing the importance of ensuring financial stability. I mean, it's just obvious. Prioritizing twelve K twelve education, closing the gaps in services, including special education, materials and supplies, and transportation, all those things. Even as we're facing significant budget challenges ahead for the district, I've been very impressed by the way the community is coming together to address these challenges. And that's that's a key thing for Bellevue. And I knew I knew if we keep working on it, it would happen. And you certainly have made it made it come away. We packed rooms of students and parents talking about the resources they need to be successful. From my perspective, I've seen an evolution where the city and the school district were distinct entities with very little interaction to partnership, moving to a partnership, a real partnership, and we're working together and championing the needs of our students in future generations of Bellevue residents. They're not just Bellevue School District students. They're not just Bellevue City students. They're Bellevue's students. And that has been a real, real change. The last thing I want to say on this is that is really ask a question here. What what can the city and this council do to build on our partnership? How can we help you as you face increasing funding gaps and growing student needs and collaborate in a meaningful way?
Yeah, thanks for the question. And then John Harrison, my chief of staff, feel free to chime in anytime. I I think it starts with just building relationship. I mean, Councilmember Lee and I, we go back many, many years because of our because his daughter and I went to school together. But I think it all starts with the relationships. I think, you know, going to DC with the two of you was amazing. I I think it starts with that, but there's so much that we can do together, whether it's working together to address workforce housing or working together to find additional streams of revenue for the school district. But it's this is one of those things where I think when we engage together, we can find solutions. I think partnering to support our families is critical. Partnering to support early learning is critical. When I worked in the Seattle School District, there was also a strong partnership between the city and the school district. And I do think that there's opportunities to fund the things that our community wants, that we don't necessarily have the benefit of getting funding from public education. Because in the state of Washington, we are limited locally on what we can spend in our district. And so I think the city has an opportunity, if they want to, to look at those priorities, see where there's kind of intersection, and then find ways to fund those things together.
I would just, first of all, it's an honor to be here in the city that I live in and vote in. So thank you very much for the opportunity. And just, you know, I I agree with you, Councilmember Stokes, that there seems to be some synergy. And a few weeks back, we we did have a meeting with a couple of members of our school board and city council members and city staff. And it was the first time I recall that type of meeting. But for many years, we've we've worked directly staff to staff. And just a couple of examples, you know, with affordable housing, I've worked really closely with with Linda Abey. We've got a proposal, not a proposal, we're we've got a contract with a consultant funded by Amazon. Linda worked very closely with with me to help kind of in the creation of the of the RFP. You know, our police and fire departments worked really closely with our safety and security department. Human services staff worked really closely with 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 our staff. And tonight, you're going to get an update on your legislative priorities. And this year, for the first time, I worked really closely with with Katie so that we're, you know, in sync with our our legislative priorities along with yours. So again, we've been working together, and I agree that there's some synergy for more partnership, and it's it's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're 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 with you. Let's let's get going on it even more.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. I am very excited to have you here and and giving an update. And having been in that meeting, the joint meeting, it was really helpful to understand some of our shared interests because, you know, as you've said, the Bellevue students are our students. And so how we actually work together grounded in the success of the students and families is going to be the most important. So great to see the increase in enrollment. You know, to me, when I think about budgets, it's both revenue and cost. And so I like to, I was really glad to see that we are increasing our revenues coming in because we're we are offering more for students to be able to be in the Bellevue School District. And having been part of the the STEM Advisory Committee, really appreciated seeing the CTE and and the practical knowledge that they get that I don't remember getting when I was in high school or middle school. So really great to see you being really innovative and thinking about what are the other offerings that we can have that both are exciting for students and actually brings more in from out of district. I think that in the past, we were so full that we weren't necessarily able to enroll students from outside the district. So really excited to see that. I agree with your comments about how we can partner because I too have been thinking about what are the other partnering opportunities. And I think on the ledge priorities, especially this coming year, because I understand that there's supposed to be a bill that that incentivizes school district lands for affordable housing. So if there's a way for us to partner on that, that appears to be something that there is interest in the legislature to do this year. For the question that I that I have on my mind is, we know that, as you said, the the budget revenues or excuse me, the reserves is down to a level that's below where you want to be. I'd like to hear a little bit more about how you're planning on shrinking that ten million dollar shortfall, especially since I think that although we're all pushing collectively to increase funding at the state level and we hear from the incoming governor that they have the same interest, that's a really tough budget year. So I would like to better understand what is what is the strategy for addressing that ten million? And then from that lens, what are some things that the city could do in partnership?
Sure. I mean, ten million is just this year. Next year is sixteen million. And we've started doing listening sessions with our staff today. So we've been going out and talking with staff about what their thoughts and ideas are. But one of the things I explained at Taiyi today was sixteen million dollars is ninety-one FTE, ninety-one staff members because eighty-five percent of the district budget is salaries. So the only way to get that much money out is to look at is to look at staff. And so unfortunately, if we don't get additional revenue from the state, we have to look at cutting about ninety staff members from all over the place. And so that that's the work that we're doing. This year, cutting ten million, we're trying to do it in efficiencies. We're trying to do it in hiring freezes, which I don't know if you've ever done a hiring freeze, but it's hard to get money out of a hiring freeze. And then we're doing it by cutting our materials and supply budgets to our schools. And so at the town hall that you were at, thank you for coming. We had, you know, music teachers, art teachers who were saying, it's just challenging. We don't have the supplies that your kids need in the classroom. And so we are doing all of that to try to trim. But we hyper-staffed our schools coming out of COVID. Part of it was by necessity because we had to keep class sizes down so that we didn't have such packed rooms, you know, coming out of COVID. But then the needs that students had were so much greater. And so class size became an actual an issue. Plus, we added a lot of mental health support, plus a lot of family support because our community needed it. I mean, it was challenging, you know, those two years after COVID. But we have to kind of wean ourselves off of all of those investments. And so those are the kind of the areas that we're looking at is is to try to trim down by about ninety people our our staff in the school district. It's sixteen million is only three percent of our budget, but it's a huge impact on our schools.
Yeah, well, and we know that the kids continue to have that need because we continue to underfund mental and behavioral health support. And having a daughter that's currently working for the school district, I certainly hear stories about kids and how much support they need in order to thrive. And so I think that's the collective challenge that we have in our community is how do we continue to provide adequate resources to be that exceptional school district when we have that budget challenge? So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, may I before I make some comments here, I just have to say that Mr. Zimmerman's hand gestures are hateful and anti-Semitic. And personally, I find them dis- disruptive as verbal outbursts. That's just me, but I feel like they're worthy of a warning just as much as a a verbal outburst would be. So I just wanted to-
I feel the same way, but I've spoken with our attorney. It does not meet the criteria for that.
Fair enough. I appreciate you checking into that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. And I didn't want to interrupt the wonderful presentation. So thank you for being here, Dr. Aramaki and Mr. Harrison. Thank you so much. Great presentation. Really appreciated it. And yeah, I I share Councilmember Stokes's support of of you and the challenges ahead. And we're with you all the way. And certainly, you know, it was so great to get to know you better and ask a lot of questions and and great conversations when we were on our DC trip. And then again, when we had a meeting with Councilmember Zon and the mayor, that was wonderful as well. And I hope we have more of that and more collaboration and and more ways that we can support you as as you continue to move forward, even when we get beyond the challenges here of 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 some deficits and some other challenges that the school district is facing. I love the fact, a a number of different levels here, that what you're highlighting, like the trades and the culinary school, all these things. I I I'm sure the vast majority of Bellevue High School students are going to college, but you're opening up their eyes to, I think, some different careers that perhaps I didn't even think about beforehand, great careers that that pay well and that they can really get excited about. So I'm just thrilled that we're doing that. I also love the fact that collaborating with homeschoolers. I I did not know about this about this program. I think that is just fantastic versus seeing that as a as a negative because we want them, you know, in school, but now we're collaborating with them. We're providing that digital online for those who prefer a homeschooling environment. I think that's I think that's fantastic. Plus, it works for those that need a flexible schedule, like, you know, a superior athlete that has a real chance of 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 going pro. Why not give them that opportunity to to learn on the road or wherever they might be? So so that's I I just love that. Couple of questions that I had. Number one, is the out of district students sustainable? Certainly, it's it seems to, you know, be popular now, and it's certainly buoyed the the student body. But is that sustainable? Do you see a drop off? Or, I mean, as far as I can tell, as long as we maintain Bellevue standards and we have that ranking as thank you that you put on the last slide here, I think it is going to attract. But do you see that as being sustainable long term? I also wanted to ask questions about the SROs and if you're looking to bringing them back into the school district as well. I hear that time and time again from parents who loved interacting with SROs. I heard it from students too, both past and current, that SROs played a a role in their in their journey through through Bellevue, an important one and and one that was really meaningful to them. So love to get an update there. And then my last question before I turn it over to you, and this is actually from a from a constituent. But she had asked about the amount of time for school lunches. Is it maintaining twenty-five minutes for lunch? Or could there be a change that we might see in the legislature during this session right now? So I wanted to get that question in on behalf of a constituent as well.
Yeah, thanks. Those are great questions. First one about out of district. So I think it's sustainable if we if we leverage out of district kids just to keep things stable. We wouldn't use it to try to grow the district. So I think just to stabilize, like I was talking to folks at Taiyi, we don't want to grow Taiyi to twelve, thirteen hundred kids. But if we can keep, if we can have out of district kids help keep it around a thousand, that would be good. So I think it's sustainable for that purpose. But we would never rely on out of district for growth in the school district. So that's-
And the one, the reason why it might not be sustainable is if our in-district enrollment increased, that's the only, like, you know, as long as that remains flat, then then it is sustainable.
But but we actually think it's it potentially could increase once light rail expands. So the light rail right now, it doesn't go very far. I mean, but once it does, it'll be even more access because I think a lot of the barriers to kids coming are about transportation, trying to get up and down. Four oh five is kind of the barrier. Around SROs, I'll just say, whenever I see Chief Shirley walking around one of my schools, I mean, it's quite amazing. And the kids just gravitate towards him. And so we talk about this in our community quite a bit, but safety is our number one priority. And we do everything to keep our school buildings safe. And we do a lot of work around mental health, around training and things like that. I think part of the SRO situation is it does cost money. So I think that's a barrier for us. But even so, right now, our main strategies that seem to be the most effective are making sure that our buildings are secure, that our staff are trained, and that we have really good things in place to watch out for the mental health of our kids. And so those are kind of like kind of the big research-based things that we are working on in our school district. And we do feel great about our relationship and partnership with the the Bellevue Police Department. And so even though we don't have necessarily a formal SRO program in place right now, we our doors are open to our police officers coming in and building relationships with kids. And then the response time from the Bellevue PD is remarkable, and it's about two minutes for us. And so and then we work with the Bellevue PD on trainings. And so they use our buildings to train their their officers. And so a lot of those things are in place. But a formal SRO program, we haven't really entertained that recently because we feel like the things that we're working on are effective in addressing, you know, the threat of school shooters and things like that. So that's what I'll say about SROs. And then the the last thing I'll just mention about school lunches is we we actually have some of the longer school lunchtimes for our elementary kids in Bellevue. There was an article or a couple of them recently that talked about other districts that were struggling to get kids fifteen or twenty minutes of time. And I think part of that's because we've had Bellevue parents advocating for longer lunches. And so I don't see them being longer than that. I don't know if you've ever been in an elementary lunchroom, but there's a point where it's just too long. Because once a student decides that they're done eating- Because once a student decides that they're done eating, there's a whole lot of trouble that can happen in that lunchroom. And so for us, I was an elementary school principal, you just have to find the exact right amount of time. That's enough time to eat and not enough time to create chaos in the, in the lunchroom. So I, I think we've got it pretty good. It's around 20, 25 minutes.
25. Yes, 25 is the standard across the district. And I, as a former high school principal, the same is true of high school, of, of high school kids as well. There's a point at which it gets too long.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Lee.
Well, Dr. Aramaki, I know you for a long time, yeah. And greetings from my daughter, Dr. Lee. I really feel that, you know, we have challenges, you know, whenever. But we cannot control it. It happens. And the key is we have the right people to solve the problem, to come up with solutions. And I think you are the right person. You're a longtime Bellevue resident for how many, five generations? And so you are raised in Bellevue, you know Bellevue. You have lots of experience in Seattle Public Schools. And you've seen a lot of what other districts experience. And you work in the North Shore, right? And so now you're back to home. So I think that you've always been one that impressed me as multi-talented. You can do a lot of stuff. You can be very flexible, understanding. You have a family that's very, very close. And you understand different situations, multicultural. And that's one of the unique thing about Bellevue is that we are very multicultural. You know, we're a city where we welcome the world. We honestly are. So as a result, Bellevue now is as diverse as any other city in the state of Washington, if not more. So I'm not going to question you of your ability to come up with solutions. I, I think it's important that we want to hear from you. When you talk about collaboration, partnership, we are all people, we are all here to support you and help you. We are the resources that can help you. But we need to also help you with perspective of our community that you normally don't deal with. And, but I know that education is one of the most important thing for a community. That's one of the reason why most of us come here. And immigrants continue to come here because they value the future that education bring to them for their future prosperity. And hopefully, they will come back. And, but you already provided foundation for it. So it's the most important thing. And so, however, I do appreciate the things that you're talking about because it is the fundamental thing of providing a quality education, doing things that you are aware of. You talk about priority, you know, all that stuff, financial priority and all that. So my question is, you talk about state and levy, and it's difficult to cut. But I believe that you will make those decisions. And based on what, you know, you know is the best way to do it. But in order to do it, again, we need to be working with the school board members. And as the superintendent, I think you have the ability to make those recommendations, suggestions. And the city council, hopefully, we will have the same synergy in to provide, to have that kind of communication. So I do have a couple of questions for you, which is not something you don't know, but that just something maybe you can respond a bit for us to know. One is, you, just talk about the easiest first, things that you brought up. You talk about out-of-district students. That will help us stabilize our population. That helps a bit. But it's not our main mission. So I agree with you that, you know, we need to do it for our benefit. However, my question is, finance is important. We do have financial situations, you mentioned. To stabilize it, do you get any out-of-state tuition advantages? Or they pay the same tuition as in-district students? Do we charge them more to pay for the budget shortfall? Is that a consideration?
Yeah, so the, the state gives us the same funding for students that are out of district and in district.
Ah, okay. So it's not, we cannot add on to it in any way.
We cannot, no.
Okay. Thank you. So you just, you don't get help financially. A second, which is the SRO you mentioned. And I believe that when we had SRO system initially, many, many years ago, it's not really helping the school to, to enforce rules and laws. It's to really educate the students to become familiar with the law enforcement personnel. So they consider law enforcement as friends rather than enemies. So I don't know whether potentially there is a financial opportunity to do that.
Maybe you could clarify what the SRO role has been historically.
Historically, what the role has been?
Yeah.
Historically, SRO.
Historically, initially, it was exactly as Councilmember Lee has described. And I think over time, so we had four SROs. We had four, a full-time SRO in each of our four comprehensive high schools. And then we had an additional two that covered the six middle schools. Well, the four, the five middle schools and the two 612 choice schools. And I think over time, that vision changed. And it be, and we, we did see things like our SROs helping enforce school rules. And I think that was, that was, that was problematic. And that came out, you may recall that Assistant Chief Papa Chuck and myself and our safety and security director did a study. And that was one of the things that, that, that we heard from the community was, was problematic. There's been new legislation, it's relatively new, three, four years now, that stipulate that if a school district has an SRO program, it needs to have a memorandum of understanding with, with the law enforcement agency. And the state has really spelled out in a very clear and concise way what an SRO program should look like. So that's kind of the evolution of, of, of the program. And our program, we paused having officers in buildings when we were in COVID. And then when we came back from COVID is when we began that study and have not returned the, the SROs since that time. So it's been about four years that we've not had SROs in the buildings.
I see the value of the original intention, purpose. You know, because our, SRO officer, officer-friendly, basically. You know, who carries a big teddy bear, drives a VW bug that's donated by a dealer. And he is the friend of the student, of kids. And there's no threat, no threat of law enforcement. If we, can we, you mentioned about this legislation. That's the state legislation. Do we have to abide by that? Or can we have separate agreements? I, I, I hope the city can arrange, to, to me, that's the cost the city can provide. And we have officers going there, become friends of the students. Everybody knows everybody and just, that's it. So would that be a model that we can follow?
Yeah, and I think, and Dr. Aramaki alluded to that. I mean, formally, if we have an SRO program, we do have to have an official memorandum of understanding with the law enforcement agency. However, we do have, and Dr. Aramaki referenced Chief Shirley, but there are dozens of officers who go out of their way to be a presence in our buildings and do exactly the kind of things you're talking about, Councilmember Lee.
Yeah. Okay. If that's accomplished, then we, in fact, we do have the model to be friends, officer-friendly for this young people, especially. So I'll do two more quick ones. One is use of school properties. I know that, you know, people, at, at least I believe, the city of Bellevue has really been stretched in the facility we provide for our citizens, for communities, for our residents. So is there any surplus properties or properties that can be shared by the city? A common usage, like sports fields or, or the culture facilities, like the theaters and so on?
The city manager and I, we've met, but have some property or available buildings that we could use for different purposes. And when we rent them out, we do, that money does go into our general fund budget. And so there is a mutual benefit when we can, when we can arrange things like that. So there are opportunities to do that. And we've sort of started that conversation already for things that might be a mutual benefit either, you know, to the city and to the district.
That's something that can help you financially. Finally, we know that the gap between the, what's the word? The, the, the high achievers and the low achievers. It's a challenge for the city, for the school district, right? How do we narrow the gap between the high achievers and the low achievers?
Yeah, there's a, there's a few things. I mean, that, that's literally the, the goal of our work in the school district is that every student, through support and resources, has the opportunity to excel in school and then out of school. So that, that is our job, is to make sure that kids who might be struggling have the same opportunities. There's so many things that we do. But we are providing a lot of tutoring for kids at our higher need schools. We provide lower class sizes at our Title I schools. So our schools that, that support most of our kids in poverty and our multi-language learners. We also provide, we pay for computer science teachers in each of our Title I elementary schools so that the kids get computer science lessons every single week. Teachers in their team, students come up with differentiation plans and things like that. So we, we spend a lot to provide equitable supports, particularly in our schools that have the greatest needs. And so there's a lot of those things that we do, including providing support in summer school and, and other kind of opportunities like that.
How is that received by the parents?
Okay, Councilmember Lee, we need to move on.
How's that, how's that received?
Which one?
The, the program you're, you're doing. How is that received?
The families love it.
The parents love it? Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hamilton.
Uh, great. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate all of the comments so far. Thank you so much for being here, for all the work that you and your team do that really sets the standard of excellence in the state and around the country. I have six kids that went mostly through Bellevue Public Schools. So a lot of experience with that. I have two daughters that are currently teachers in South King County. So we talk about students and teachers and administrators quite a bit. Those are woven into a number of our family conversations. So, you know, the rewards and challenges they encounter that I, I assume are universal inform my understanding of our local education system. And just really commend you and others in the field for your dedication and perseverance. Keep up the, the good work for sure. I know our entire community holds a Bellevue School District in high regard. I hear it a lot. I'm, I'm sure you do as well. There's a clear understanding of the tremendous value that the district brings to the community. And I appreciate you being here to provide this update. I think it supports a vital collaboration that needs to occur to ensure we're supporting our families. And I certainly want to think of tonight as something we can and really must build on. So please stay in touch with all of us and me specifically. I want to know what I can do to continue to support you. Have just a couple of questions for you. I know that there was the school funding forum that took place the other day. And I was wondering if you might, and I just wanted to drill down a little bit on Councilmember Stokes' comment about collaborating and going forward, but specifically kind of what you learned in the forum. And then from that, how can individual community members and the city and council members support your effort as you synthesize some of what was learned during that forum and, and move forward here in the near term?
Yeah, the, I mean, the, the first thing that comes to my mind is it just reinforced for me how much this city supports education. I mean, the town hall, we weren't sure how many people were going to be there. The, the Sammamish pack was packed. I mean, it was standing room only. And so we were just thrilled to see the community come out and support. I, I knew a lot of the information that was being shared, but what was great was our students were up there and they basically knew the bills that our legislators were working on. And the legislators who support Bellevue are incredible. And they, they have already set up bills to basically offer funding for special education, materials and supplies and transportation. And so we're thrilled about that. And I think what I would say to the community is, I know that people have different views about public education funding and taxes and things like that. But our, our ask is that we all just support the increased funding for education. Our, our kids really need it. When people cite studies that are, you know, academics are on a decline, I think some of that is true. There's so many factors, one of them being the impact of COVID. But also, if you look at the decline of academics, it starts in about 2012, which is the advent of the cell phone and social media. And if you've read The Anxious Generation, it is a huge factor. Our kids, he calls it the opportunity cost. But kids spend four or five hours on their cell phones a day. What are they not doing if they're doing that? And so you just imagine they're not studying. They're not doing their homework. And it is, it's literally this thing that's so addictive for kids in their pockets. And so we're, we're combating huge things. Anyways, I'm getting off topic, but the main thing is, is we, we need to support the, the funding for education. Otherwise, I think what we're going to end up seeing is people will become more and more displeased with public education because we, we aren't supporting it in the way that we need to.
Thank you.
Hey, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Aramaki and Mr. Harrison, to be here for a great update, an important update on the Bellevue School District. All of the question and comment has been raised by my colleagues. And the team that I've heard that was my main talking point was, I think we should have more regular and structured meetings between these two bodies. I think we can do a lot better in collaboration. I think we can do, we can solve real problems if we become in touch more and have more structured way to communicate and collaborate. So looking forward to you all with the, our city staff to come up with that. And hopefully, we can help you to achieve your challenging year ahead of you with all of these budget deficit. Let us know how can we be helpful. We are here for you and we support you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Okay, so quick, super valuable update. I'd love to make sure we do this at least once a year. I really loved hearing about the innovation in career and technical education. I didn't know you were doing that. That's amazing. And the digital discovery program. I had two questions. One was, is, we have heard from our constituents whose kids are going to Issaquah schools that are very crowded right now, that they have an interest in being in the Bellevue School, School District. And I just wonder, like, is there a way for them to get into the Bellevue School District and have transportation? Because I think that's the hard thing. Or is there any interest in, interest in redistricting at all to include those households in the Bellevue School District? And then my second question, you know, we, you have two levies that are going to, I know I'm not campaigning for your levies, but I know they're going to be up in a year or so. And I'm wondering, how do you think the funding from the levies impacts the performance of your school programs?
Yeah, great question. We try to be good neighbors with each other. So we, I, I think the issue of redistricting is very complicated. What I'll say is we have open enrollment. So if families want to come to the Bellevue School District, they just need to apply. And if the school has room. I think the challenge is, is that a lot of those families, like, that you're probably talking about in the Lakemont area, like, it's Taiyi and Newport that they would be interested in. And those schools are full. There is a process that communities can go through.
Yeah, we kind of anticipated that question might be asked, especially, I mean, I live in the Lakemont neighborhood, so I hear it from, from my neighbors at, at times. And I anticipated that you all were hearing from, you know, the, the communities that border us, where you have City of Bellevue residents, but they're not in the, in the, in the, in the Bellevue School District. In this case, we're talking about, about Issaquah. So they're, they're, they're outside of school districts becoming insolvent financially or enrollment so low that they can't operate. There are kind of two ways that boundary. There are kind of two ways that boundaries can change. One is a school board initiated process, and both processes, processes, by the way, are administered by the Educational Service District. So in our case, it's Puget Sound Educational District, Educational Service District, PSESD 113 down in Renton. So the PSESD kind of coordinates the process. One way is what, what they call a, a, a school board initiated process. So in the, in the case of Bellevue and Issaquah, either Bellevue or Issaquah could, could, could raise the issue. And then the affected district needs to have a conversation about the issue. So if Issaquah was to come to us and say, hey, would you consider? Or if we were to do what Dr. Aramaki says that we wouldn't do, and have a, and have, and have that conversation the opposite way. What the process is, is the two districts are required to, to give the PSESD notice and then negotiate within a 90-day period an outcome. Either side can ask for mediation during that process, but ultimately they have to agree. They have to agree not to do anything or agree to do something. And then that, and then if they don't agree, the PSESD sets up what they call a regional committee to make that decision. So that's pretty rare. The, the other process is called a citizen's petition. So if 50% of the residents, voting age residents in the affected area agree that, you know, they would like to, for example, join the Bellevue School District, they could make that, they could make that petition to us. But they would have to, of course, you know, get reached that 50% threshold to, to a petition. And then the process is exactly as I described before. Districts need to negotiate within a 90-day period. They can ask for mediation. They have to come to some kind of, some kind of agreement. And about a dozen years ago, we did have a group of residents from the Newcastle area undergo that, that process. And our board at that time did not accept it, said, you know, we're not, we, they didn't want to kind of consider it. So those are the, the two processes are both relatively rare, but the citizen's petition process seems to be a little more, what's the word, a, a little more frequent than, than a school board initiated process. I hope that makes some sense.
Sure, that's great. Really good information.
And related to the levies, the levies are so critical. Our enrichment levy basically helps fund our seventh period day. And so we are able to offer music and art and theater and languages. We have a hot glass blowing class at Sammamish. None of that would be possible if we didn't have funding for the seventh period day. It allows us to hire another 60 teachers or so to be in our high schools and, and offer kids the classes that bring them joy, let's just say. It's not that the academics doesn't, don't bring them joy, but if a kid can go to glass blowing at seventh period, they can make it through periods one through six. And so it's a huge thing. Special education, like I said, half of the levy goes to supporting our kids with disabilities. It's a huge commitment in our community, but something that we're all very, very proud of. And then the other thing that the levy helps funds is it helps us fund the salaries that we pay in Bellevue. Our teachers, they don't make enough to live in Bellevue, most of them. But we pay them enough for them to travel across three districts to come here. And so Bellevue has some of the highest trained teachers. We have, I think, the highest percentage of national boards certified teachers around. And so we have very skilled teachers, but many of them have to travel across two, three or four school districts to get here. And so the levy helps us to pay them in order to keep them coming because it's, it's a huge investment for them. But the levy funds a lot for us in Bellevue, and we're really thankful to the voters for that.
Great. Well, thank you again for coming tonight. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a break here. We'll reconvene at 10 till. Second of three study session items, City Manager, please introduce it. Thank you.
So this study session item is a preview of the 2025 legislative session at the state, and that started yesterday. The update will be given by Katie Kasimba-Halsey. She's our Assistant Director of Intergovernmental Relations at the City Manager's Office. And she's going to review some of our priority issues and some of the ways that the city will be interacting with the legislators and the legislature in the 25 session, 2025 session. So with that, I will turn it over to Katie.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Councilmembers, I'm Katie Kasimba-Halsey. So this presentation is for information only, and I will be presenting a lot of information. So there is a lot of bills out there. Can we pull the microphone a little bit closer to you? I think we might have also lost that mic. We might have lost. I'm going to move over to another mic. How is this one?
That's better.
Thank you.
We can hear you.
I'm going to shift over. Thank you. Onwards and upwards, here is the agenda for today's presentation. 2025 Legislative Session Expectations, a review of Bellevue's state legislative agenda, which you approved in October of 24, AWC's state legislative agenda, and then identifying some next steps. But before we do any of that, I think it's important to set some context for the 2025 legislative session and explain a little bit of the political climate. So the last time I was here was actually before the November general election, and a lot has happened since. So a very quick recap. Three initiatives were rejected by voters. That means they were maintained with what the state legislature approved. That was the Climate Commitment Act, the recently enacted capital gains tax, and the long-term care program. Whereas the natural gas measure, that's Initiative 2066, was approved by narrow margins. However, there is legal action to challenge the single subject rule and constitutionality of that initiative. Also very important in that election were many state offices and many offices at the House of Representatives and State Senate. Democrats captured nine executive office positions, and they retained both control of the state house and the state representatives, state House of Representatives and the state senate. They also grew their majorities in the House and the Senate, which means that they actually have a 60% majority in both chambers now, allowing them to approve bonds and transfers from budget stabilization accounts without the support of Republicans. And although the state's political climate and landscape remains relatively the same, the state legislature has seen a significant amount of turnover over the last year. There are several retirements, lawmakers moving into different positions. And so we're going to see a lot of change in 2025. Notably here for Bellevue, we have some changes as well. The county council, King County Council, appointed Representative Slatter to the 48th Legislative District's senate seat, where she will serve for the remainder of the year. And, and then her vacant seat in the House of Representatives was filled by Redmond City Councilmember Osman Salhoudin. And so he was just sworn in this week. Representative Tana Sen in the 41st Legislative District has announced that Governor-elect Ferguson has selected her to serve as the Director of the State Department of Children, Youth and Families, which then prompts her, will prompt her to resign from her house seat. And the King County Council expects to make an appointment for her seat very shortly. So on to a 2025 Legislative Session Preview. Welcome to day number two in Olympia. It is the first year of the two-year biennium, and it's a 105-day session. So it actually ends on April 27th. I'm not counting at all. This is a budget year, and the financial outlook for both the operating and transportation budgets will really be the running theme this year. I'll just give you a quick highlight and snippet from each of those budgets. The operating budget has approximately $10 to $12 billion of a shortfall over the next four years caused by flattening or slightly decreasing revenues and rising costs. The transportation budget, which is, seems like it's constantly in a state of flux. There are significant shortfalls again this year in delivering recent transportation packages and programs, even regardless of the Climate Commitment Act moving forward. The proposed 2025 and 2027 transportation budget faces $200 million shortfall, but over six years, it's actually a $6 billion shortfall. And this is largely driven by a decrease in motor vehicle fuel tax and toll revenues. Capital budget is not expected to increase in size like it has in recent years, so we'll have to be very mindful of that. Now, this is, it's typical that a governor would propose a budget to the state legislature, and that happened just in typical form and fashion in December. Governor Inslee proposed his budget proposal, and he proposed a budget that relies on approximately $13 billion in new tax revenue and has an impact on local governments that I wanted to take note of, including sweeping $100 million out of the Public Works Assistance Account. And also increasing cost to cities to send officers to basic law enforcement training. Many other impacts, but those are just two that I wanted to note. And what's not typical is that we actually would have an incoming governor, a governor-elect, who comes in with significantly different budget priorities. In this case, Governor-elect Ferguson's budget principles emphasize over $4.4 billion in cuts, signaling an emphasis or an avoidance for a tax-first approach that we saw with Governor Inslee's proposal. He also proposes a 6% cut to most state agencies. That does not apply to basic education. He is calling for some new funding in the operating budget, including $200 million over four years for, to develop a grant program for local departments to hire police officers. And bills, I say this, bills, bills, bills and bills. The legislature has considered, will consider hundreds and hundreds of bills. In fact, when I took a look at this over the weekend, there were 500 bills that were dropped before session even started. So those are called prefiled bills. And of those 500 prefiled bills, your city's legislative team is already reviewing or monitoring over 90 of them. So we have folks in every single department who is looking through what we can see when they are being dropped to analyze what the implications are for Bellevue. It's a great team. You are very well supported, and I feel so blessed to have them here working at the city. So some likely hot topics in Olympia this session. We covered a lot of this, but the budget shortfall is going to dominate the conversation. How they're going to fill that $12 billion budget hole over the next four years is really going to be a focus of attention. And as I already mentioned, Governor Inslee's proposed his budget, and he submitted that already. That will really dominate the first few weeks of session. There'll be hearings in the fiscal committees on his proposed plan. And then after those initial hearings, budget discussions will die down a bit until the March 20th revenue forecast, when then the conversations will speed back up again. And the outcome of those budget challenges do, do really remain uncertain, particularly with significant number of new legislators, and then also the change in administration. We have heard a significant amount about tax proposals. Democratic leaders have not been shy about that. In fact, there's plenty of press about that as well. They have indicated that it could be all but inevitable. That being said, we do have a new administration coming in who is looking for reductions rather than new taxes. There is no consensus on what may advance or what may not advance, but what we have heard about are employer payroll taxes, BNO surcharges, capital asset ownership or wealth tax. And just as a reminder, the incoming governor is deeply skeptical of the wealth tax, and that's been on record. Just wanted to also mention that there is, in addition to the tax proposals that are happening with the operating budget, there is the significant issue with the transportation funding pack, funding as well. So WashDOT has indicated that several projects, including those on I-405 and 167, cost more than the appropriated amount that was identified in the 2023-2025 budget, so the budget that was previously approved. And those projects are all under construction. It includes the Renton to Bellevue widening and express tollings project, the Brickyard to 527 improvements project, and the Northeast 85th Street interchange. All projects in construction, but have a funding gap. And the House and the Senate are having hearings this week to discuss the governor's proposal. This is Governor Inslee's proposal. Governor Inslee did suggest and, and identify that though, that funding gap should be filled. Councilmember Newen House did testify this afternoon, and will testify again, asking that that funding gap be filled in the, in the coming months when they determine the transportation budget. Some of the reasons why this is happening, I mentioned earlier, gas tax revenues and such. And as a result, the legislature is assessing whether there should be new revenues for transportation. Some of those that they have identified as potentials are the road usage charge or the RUC, a retail delivery fee, or redirecting the vehicle sales tax revenues from the operating budget to the transportation budget. There are many, many bills that have been dropped already about land use and zoning. Some of those are related to rentals and ownership and lot splitting and mandated parking requirements. There's an additional proposal that we're reviewing right now that would require cities to allow for more housing to be built near transit. So we have got our hands full reviewing a lot of those, that legislation. In addition, there's also legislation about environmental sustainability that we're closely monitoring. And of course, you've heard from Dr. Aramaki and John about the school funding, and we are closely monitoring that as well. So now for a quick reminder that you all passed a state legislative agenda in October of 2024. And that's for this upcoming year, so 2025. It was really built in two different ways. There was the key legislative priorities, and then the state policy statement. The legislative priorities are those that are of the utmost importance to the city, so we really lead that work. And then the state policy statement covers a much more broad set of issues and gives us the flexibility to weigh in based on what we're seeing and hearing on the issues, funds and bills that happened during the legislative session. As a reminder of what's in the key legislative priorities, the Bellevue Grand Connection Project. We've got actually two different types of requests that we're assessing. A $900,000 request through the operating, I'm sorry, the capital budget for the downtown integration project. We're advancing that. Many, many thanks to each of you for attending and speaking with representatives and senators in the latter part of 2024. That has gotten a lot of traction already. And then also, we're assessing any type of potential transportation package, funding package, to see if we can request I-405 crossing funding. And Councilmember Newen House did put a plug in for that today as well. For transportation, we'll continue to advocate for the SR-521 24th Avenue Interchange Project, and then really encouraging not only to fill the funding gap for projects along I-405 and 167, but also to fund new projects and planning. We have the master plan, the I-405 master plan, that's really our guiding principles and document to lead that work. With affordable housing, we are requesting that the legislature provide adequate funding, resources and time necessary to successfully implement much of the state, state legislation related to land use and housing. And then also we're asking for flexible funding options for local jurisdictions that address affordable housing. And one update I wanted to provide you about digital permitting. This is a larger alliance request or association request with mybuildingpermit.com to improve the capabilities and modernize that site. After our conversation with our representatives back in December, Representative Wallen has agreed to champion that legislation. So I wanted to provide you that update. I'm not going to go through all of the state policy statement, but you may remember that it is aligned with the city council's strategic target areas. Thank you for your feedback on that. And then as a final reminder, the AWC legislative agenda covers fiscal sustainability, public safety, infrastructure investment, increased housing supply, and increased behavioral health treatment capacity. We are not always aligned with everything that AWC puts forward, but we do really use them as a resource and try to identify opportunities for our collective voice to be that much stronger. And finally, for my last slide, next steps. Yesterday was the first day of session. Today was the day when Governor Inslee provided his final state of the state. Tomorrow is an important day. Governor Ferguson will provide his Governor Ferguson will provide his inaugural address, and I expect that we're going to learn more about what's included in his budget priorities. We continue to set up meetings with legislators from the forty-first and forty-eighth Legislative District, including our new members, and we constantly are holding meetings with other stakeholders, cities, AWC, and as you heard John mention earlier, really working with stakeholders throughout the, throughout the city and throughout the region to make sure that we are in alignment or can find consensus on legislation and advocate, advocate together when possible. We will absolutely continue to advance our key legislative priorities. And then on February nineteenth and twentieth is AWC's City Action Days. I'm looking forward to seeing some of you down there, and also introducing many of these projects, reintroducing many of these projects to our state delegation. And one date that's not on this, I just wanted to remind you all on, is the March twentieth. That's when the revenue forecast is going to be coming out again, so that's an important date to just kind of think, okay, that's going to change the trajectory of this session and really start the budget conversations back up again. And finally, April twenty-seventh is the last day of the regular session. And with that, I am open for any of your questions.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Very good write-up in our packet as well. Any comments or questions? Yes, let's start with Councilmember Newen House.
Great presentation. Thank you so much for giving us that, that update. I think we are very blessed to have such a great staff to help us navigate, I think, what's going to be a bit of a rocky session, or at times it's going to be hard to tell, I think, which way things are going on some of these bills and, and, and policies. And personally, it's, I, I think it's great that Governor Ferguson is, is trying to pump the brakes, I think, a little bit on some of these tax proposals and asking for, I believe it was a six percent cut across all different departments. But my question, Katie, is, is, so right now, as was evident today during my, my testimonies, we're working off of Governor Inslee's, or former Governor Inslee, I guess now, budget. When do we shift to, to, to Governor Ferguson's budget or proposed budget? I know that as you put in your presentation, his address is on the fifteenth, but when does that shift happen? And then, what, what does that look like?
Yeah, the Governor Inslee proposed budget is officially transmitted, and that is what is being heard in committee hearings. Governor-elect Ferguson has budget priorities. They are about, I have them right in front of me. It's a, it's a good set of priorities in terms of setting his agenda. There is not the detail that you would expect from a governor's proposal, which is why we continue to evaluate and respond to Governor Inslee's proposal. I think we will hear more details from Governor-elect and soon-to-be Governor Ferguson tomorrow. We will still evaluate the budget proposals as they were transmitted by Governor Inslee. But of course, Governor-elect Ferguson is going to have a lot of influence in this conversation.
Yeah, for sure. Two items that have me very, very concerned this, this, this session, as I see them as real threats to Bellevue, and I'd like to get your perspective in terms of how, what our approach is going to be and how we're going to navigate this. So, you know, this council and prior council, we've worked so hard, we've all recognizing the housing crisis, and we've worked so hard to create more inventory, create more affordable housing opportunities, workforce housing opportunities, et cetera. But I'm concerned about this House Bill 1217, the rent control bill, that in my estimation could discourage new construction, reduce incentives to maintain existing properties, push small housing providers, particularly those mom-and-pop type of owner-operators out of the market. And then for tenants, I'm concerned that this means fewer housing options, and therefore higher rents and deteriorating conditions in older stock. You know, this is at a time when we need to build more housing across all income levels throughout our cities, so we really can't afford, I don't believe, legislation that makes housing production unworkable, where we don't see, like we're seeing right now, developers taking advantage of the incentives that we have in the marketplace right now. So, so that's number one. Number two is the, is the proposal regarding, and you mentioned it in your, in your comments there, about the retail delivery tax, which is a really regressive tax in terms of, of my analysis with it. And, you know, this is really to address the gas tax, and I'd, and I'd like to get your perspective on this as well, because we've moved so far with the RUC, the road usage, right? So why we're looking at this now, would they work together, collaborate together, or would we look at one or the other? I'm not sure where this is going, but, you know, online delivery fees really, again, disproportionately impact vulnerable populations, add more cars on the roadways, and increase emissions, and strain our local businesses. So again, it's inherently regressive, and they really hurt working families by eating up a larger portion of their income. I think the more wealthier families in Bellevue are not going to be as concerned about this, but these fees could really add very, add up very quickly. Now, from an environmental tool, I mean, it's just simple math. Would you rather have one UPS truck delivering two-hundred packages, or would you rather force two-hundred people into their cars, all making separate trips to purchase two-hundred different items? So there is, there's a real emissions concern there for, for, for me as well, and we've worked so hard on our environmental policy over, over the years here, and, and I, I just fear that that could impact what we're, what we're trying to achieve here in both these cases. So I would love to get your, your, your perspective in terms of our approach, in terms of, you know, how, how this policy, you know, kind of moves along, and, and how we might want to, to navigate that, either, you know, craft it in a way that's, that's not going to hurt us as much, or come out strongly against both of them.
Thank you. I'll start with House Bill 2117, which is the rent stabilization bill. I'll provide just a very high-level overview, just so everyone knows what's included in that legislation. It would cap the annual rent increases at seven percent and prohibit landlords from raising rent by an amount, any amount in the first year of tenancy. The bill exempts newly constructed apartments for their first ten years, existing buildings that are less than eleven years old, public housing, small rental arrangements, and such as a homeowner who only rents out their ADU. Excuse me, recovering from a cold. You all might recognize some of this legislation from last year. It closely matches a bill that the sponsor had proposed last year that did pass the House with a quite comfortable margin. And there, when it, by the time it came over to the Senate, it was delayed and stalled in Senate Committee. And so it did not pass out of the Senate's Ways and Means Committee, actually along with a number of other priorities as well for those members, including transit-oriented development. I will say that the makeup of the Senate is quite different this year, so I do expect that there will be some movement, and what I mean by movement is that it was scheduled for a hearing yesterday. It was scheduled on the very first day of session, and it is scheduled for a potential executive session later this week. I, I heard it was a very well-attended meeting. In fact, more people attended than what the time was allowed for people to present. Now, let me tell you a little bit about where I think we are with this. We have a very robust legislative agenda, including the state policy statement, and part of the state policy statement is about thriving people in communities and access to housing. We do have a statement about working in partnership on rental assistance to meet growing needs and prevent evictions that lead to homelessness. We do not have a specific statement on that particular piece of legislation. That being said, I, I do think we will need to monitor it over time, and I do know that this is a critical issue in the community. When it comes to the retail delivery fee, there has not been a piece of legislation that has been drafted or dropped yet, so we're still waiting for that. My understanding is that it will be Representative Wiley who proposes that legislation, and my understanding is that really individuals from both the House and the Senate Transportation Committees are looking for different proposals or different revenue-generating opportunities. The retail delivery fee is certainly one of them. We are also silent specifically on the retail delivery fee, but I will mention that in writing our legislative agenda under "safe and efficient transportation," we identify that the city encourages the state to act with urgency to identify and adopt sustained revenue source to accelerate transportation investments. That being said, we had a very important caveat. If the legislature considers transitioning from the gas tax to an alternative revenue source, it must provide adequate funding for state and local governments. Want to emphasize that. New or replacement revenue sources should be equitable, less regressive, support economic development, and minimize impacts to small businesses. So I wanted to make sure and just emphasize that we definitely have incorporated that feedback about the less regressive into our legislative agenda. We'll be tracking and monitoring that legislation very closely, and be sure to keep you all updated.
Thank you for that, and I would just also encourage staff to check in with the impact of some of our stakeholders, namely our largest employer in the city, the impact that this will have on them as well. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Zun.
Yes, thank you, Katie. This is really thorough, and I too express my appreciation for you and the, and the government relations staff for keeping us well-informed about what's going on. I appreciate the weekly state ledge update, especially, you know, knowing when the meetings are going to be, so that in addition to us being on the council, we can individually keep track of what's going on and also add our name in there if we want to. So that's really helpful. I, I would recommend that as, as more information is known about the school district funding, that that is also added to the weekly updates, because we did include supporting funding and increasing special ed, I believe, in our ledge agenda. We might not have put the MSOC and transportation in there, but definitely the special ed, I remember us putting into our ledge agenda. I was also thinking about, absolutely, it's going to be like budget, budget, budget this year, really also being attuned to unfunded mandates, so I think even more this year, really understanding the fiscal note and anything that gets added down there that may be something we're interested in, but if it doesn't come with any funding for us to implement, we also don't have unlimited budget ourselves, so that's something to look out for. The other thing I was thinking about is if we are trying to have six percent cuts in these different state agencies, just being really attuned to the fact that those cuts don't result in a transfer of those responsibilities to our communities and municipalities, because I can imagine that depending on where, what the cuts are, it doesn't mean that those needs aren't there, it just means that the state is not actually going to fund to that same degree. So being able to keep track of that. I would be really concerned about cuts to the Public Works Trust Fund, because that is a place where some local transportation projects get done, so really keeping attuned to that. And then I would say on the transportation part, I am curious about, so you said that in this upcoming year, two-hundred-million shortfall, which is still not, you know, pennies in a cushion, and better understanding where those cuts might be. And then six billion over six years is a much higher climb, so I know that with WashDOT, there's been discussion about some bills to give them more authority for alternative deliveries, so that they can make sure they're using all the tools in their toolbox. So it would be good to understand what are some other things that are going on to help the, the transportation agencies be more efficient and effective, and whether we could advocate for what they need in order to reduce the cost, because it's both adding more revenue as well as reducing cost. And then lastly, having just come from the Transportation Research Board, I sat in on a couple of discussions about road usage charges and some of the challenges and the nuances associated with the details of that, and how that plays into, to roads that already have tolls. So my sense is that one's going to take a bit more baking of really working through the details before anything will shake loose. So I do think we need to look at all the tools in the toolbox for revenues and understanding the implications. So I'm not saying one way or the other, whether the retail delivery fee makes sense or not, but I do think that we have to figure out what both some revenue increases look like and what the sources are, as well as getting more efficient in delivery, so.
Great, thank you, that's excellent.
Thanks.
You know, I'm going to second Councilmember Newen House's concern about a rental cap. We're having like historically low starts this year, and it's not looking any better for next year, so that means that we have hardly any new construction on multifamily housing. And so, especially when we're working on Wilberton and trying to really get all the housing we need in that area, and whether, we're having the discussion whether it'll be mandatory or voluntary, but we have to be really careful that we don't do anything that disincentivizes the construction of multifamily housing in the next five years.
Thank you.
And then, you know, I, I really thought that our digital permitting, which we put in in 2019, right before COVID hit, saved our city. We were one of the few cities that had the ability to permit online, and when City Hall was closed down, we were still able to permit, so if you ever need to say something positive about that. And then I had asked you about how the state is looking at possibly combining Left One and Two, and since Councilmember Zun and I are on the left board, I was wondering what your thoughts are on that, if it's likely, and what the impact would be.
I still need to identify what the impact will be for Bellevue, but here's what I can tell you about the proposal itself from Governor Inslee. We don't know for sure if it's going to carry forward with the new administration and with the state legislature, of course. So currently, Left Plan One has approximately a two-billion-dollar surplus, while Left Plan Two is fully funded. So what they have proposed, in the Governor Inslee proposed budget, is to combine the two, Left One and Left Two, and then, so that would be two different plans, two billion dollars for both plan. They would actually propose moving one billion dollars out of the Left Planning, Left Plan One and Two, and moving it out into, to be used for general state purposes. So the rationale, I might say, for the governor's office is that these plans are fully funded, and those were state funds that were put in, so he would like to use those funds for other purposes, but I absolutely agree that we need to identify what that actual impact means for the city.
Well, the state isn't paying anything of our Left benefits, so I don't think it affects us at all. I think that's their own fund for their own employees, because our city pays our Left Fund on our own.
Let me, I, I need to get the exact details, but I'll make sure and send that out.
Thank you, I had no idea, so that, that puts a whole new light on it. Anybody else want to make a comment or a question? Councilmember Hamilton.
Mayor, excuse me, thank you, Katie. Appreciate the report, appreciate the weekly reports as well. I think you guys are set up to really have a, a good session, and I share some of the earlier comments about what a great government relations team we have, so I'm, I'm really excited. I think a lot of good stuff happens. And you, you kind of referred to some of this, but I just want to make sure that, that I'm clear. You know, we're talking about a budget shortfall, but it's just the revenue forecast, right? And that really, even though the forecast isn't quite as rosy, we're going to, the state will take in more money each year as we go through, is that right?
That, that is true. I think what we're seeing at the state level and with these forecasts is that the forecasts continue to decline, so the spending, the spending amount is going up, and the revenues aren't coming in at the same pace as the spending. And so, yes, you are correct.
And so, and as I've heard it talked about, it's, it's serious, but it's not a crisis like we've had in the past. So it needs to be addressed, I mean, it's a dire situation, but pretty doable. So it needs to be addressed, I mean, it's a dire situation, but pretty doable. Do you agree with that?
I, we do have a state constitution that says that our budgets need to be balanced. So I think the crisis is on the legislature to ensure that the budget is balanced.
But more doable maybe than past, you know, big, more serious economic.
Yeah, I think I know where you're going with this. The recession was a completely different story where it had different impacts. And I would say that in this current climate, the impacts are different. And so what the state legislature will have to evaluate is whether to maintain current levels of service or increase them based on caseloads. Caseloads are increasing particularly recently. There are new programs that have been identified or projects that have been added in recent years, so the legislature will have to identify whether they're going to maintain those programs or projects or whether they're going to defer them. And they're also going to have to decide if there's going to be new revenue options as what we've heard from Democratic lawmakers in the House and the Senate. So, yes, I think crisis might be strong, a balanced budget is critical.
Okay. So I think, you know, what I'm trying to get at and, you know, make the case for is that while they have, you know, some serious important work to do down there, it's not the kind of situation where I think, you know, we take our foot off the gas and where we, you know, I don't think we should try, you know, to take any kind of a slower approach. They've got a challenge, but I think, you know, I want to continue to make our strong case and I think it seems to me that, you know, that's very appropriate. So I just, I think there are some critically important efforts. I think the change in the revenue forecast as we understand it now is just not significant enough to prevent the legislature from acting on our needs. And I don't think they can leave us hanging and shouldn't look to cities like Bellevue to fill their budget gaps. So, and obviously, you know, Governor Inslee gets to present his budget and then we hear the priorities from Governor Ferguson's and look forward to that taking more center stage. Just, you know, and you kind of alluded to this, I don't know if there's any more to elaborate on, but, you know, when you look at Governor Inslee's budget versus Governor -elect's budget priorities, are there things that jump out at you that are different, you know, or especially different?
First, if I can, comment on whether or not to put our foot on the gas pedal or the brake. You gave me direction and us as staff, direction through the state legislative agenda to really put the gas on and especially on those key legislative priorities. So unless you tell me otherwise, I think you are absolutely right. We need to continue to advocate for the priorities that you all have identified back in October. I don't think anything has necessarily changed except for that we need to be aware of the financial situation and better understand what those budgets, what budget is most appropriate. In terms of the differences between Governor Inslee and Governor Ferguson, it is still a little early, I'm really looking forward to his inaugural address tomorrow. But as you all know, Inslee, Governor Inslee really proposed, his proposal was a mix of spending reductions, delayed investments, new revenue sources, and then he really did focus on the wealth tax and increases to the business and occupation tax. Whereas we saw a very stark and drastic contrast with Governor-elect Ferguson. He, I think it was mentioned earlier, he is proposing 6% reductions for most state agencies, but not all. Basic education K through 12 is not included in that. Higher education has 3% reductions rather than the full six. And I will just want to emphasize that Ferguson, Governor-elect Ferguson's priorities really avoid cuts to his key priorities that he identified during the election process. And that was basic education, community and technical colleges, and public safety. And so I think we're seeing that, not only in what he has demonstrated or produced in terms of his budget priorities for '25, '27, but I think what you'll hear tomorrow as well. They both agree to the extent possible to delay investments. So I think one area for that is the Fair Starts for Kids. I think there's some unifying perspective on that. And I am really looking forward to hearing more tomorrow. One area, I'll just mention, one area that I think is unique between the two, Governor-elect Ferguson definitely does put an emphasis on public safety and that same emphasis was not in Governor Inslee's proposal to the same extent.
Good. But I think, you know, we have really sound legislative priorities, we have a great team, they've got some work to do in Olympia to fix up the budget stuff, but I think we can and should expect that they are going to deliver on the priorities that we have and come through on the requests that we've made. So I think, to me, that's all very reasonable, that's part of the job, that's what I expect to occur down there. And just appreciate all the hard work and advocacy that you and your team do on behalf of the city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and look forward to further updates and any other ways that I can help support your efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. It's a good conversation. I, it's hard to have a really, a conversation that has any, I wouldn't say reality, but what's going to happen down the line because things are going to change so much. People are coming in, you have new people, the governor, new governor is doing something different and all that. I think it's, we're going to have a lot of change and all on that. And I'm not quite sure, I mean, part of this is keeping up with what is the city in favor of? What is the city's, you know, what do we want on that? And then what do individual councilmembers do? And I was, maybe I wasn't listening, but I thought you were, Councilmember Nguyen-House, you were talking to 1217 as if this is what we were doing, but you're talking another group or what? I'm just a little confused on that, what your position, because it was a little, anyhow. I think the problem is, we're in a period where things are just going this way and everything, and it'll settle eventually. How can we, how can we have seven people who have their own opinions, they have different groups they work with and the support outside of the city, and the city work on this and make any real concrete statement?
We have a process for coming up with a legislative agenda, we're just...
Okay, well, I'm just saying, that's, I'm looking forward to that. This is, this is good to have some of these things, so. And it's interesting to know, you know, what we're looking for and I think the conversation is going to be very good, but, but people, sometimes we say this, but we have these conversations and people outside come up and say, gee, what are you doing? You're voting for this or whatever. So it's this time, you know, and it's a very hard job for you to keep up with all this stuff because you wake up tomorrow and something's changed. But anyhow, this is going to, but it is going to be one that's going to be very complex.
Yeah.
Till it gets to a point where it's going to be simple because it's going to, you know, I think Ferguson's going to get pretty much what he wants to do in the long run.
Well, here's what I can say. I thoroughly enjoy speaking with each of you individually, but I take my direction from you as the council.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And I take my direction from this legislative agenda, but also from many of the other policies or, or plans that you all have approved previously.
Yeah.
So I want to give you that confidence that that is my direction.
It's just kind of, how do we keep up with it and how do we keep up when people want to talk to us about it? It's the most complex thing we do in this business.
Well, I can always be a resource to point you to where in the legislative agenda we have that policy direction.
Yeah.
Or where we don't in some cases.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Councilmember Lee?
Well, thank you, Katie, and your team for good work you're doing. It's not an easy job, right? As you mentioned, it's your old budget and new budget and we don't know exactly what the new is going to be.
Yeah.
But we have to maneuver, navigate through it. My question for you is, and also my interest, I guess, or my observation, our input to you, well, it's mine, vis-à-vis the agenda, legislative agenda you have. I kind of agree with Councilmember Nguyen-House. Housing is important, especially affordable housing. So when you have a legislative agenda that controls our rental limit and discourages building of housing because it's limited, and then there's a less incentive, you know, to get into the business, I think that would not be a good thing to do. So I think I have some concern about that. That's it, just leave it that way. Because we know that we are looking at less revenue, right? And the thought governor elect says, I'm not going to increase revenue, right? We're going to cut spending. And that doesn't, so that's a concern, a dilemma. But I believe that Governor-elect has a more balanced approach. He didn't say exactly, I'm not going to do this, right? He said that I will do that, but I'm going to see how that might work out. And so I would commend that we have some opportunities to work with Governor-elect, and one of which is, I'm just suggesting, we need to make sure that we don't come up with too much constraints to, you know, hurt our need of more housing, which is requiring revenues to do it. But, so that's one concept. The other one is transportation, that's another item that we talk about, $6 billion. We never had enough money to do anything. So to do that, I think we need to have a more efficient government, right? Which means we may need to have less spending and more efficient government and produce more in other ways, not necessarily through direct government, you know, taxing, taxing. Which is what I'm proposing, which I think confirms our legislative agenda, which is technology. I have always advocated, you know, EV, electric vehicle, autonomous vehicle. Other states like California has already authorized doing with Waymo, you know, autonomous vehicle. So why say, why say they're not doing that? If we do that, you know, we may be able to achieve the same transportation needs by not spending all the money, $6 billion, in the traditional way of, you know, looking at transportation system. We look at alternative mode, but we already have technology that can provide us, you know, the means to do that. So I believe there's a room, you know, that's something we need to push on. That's what we can do. And also, to have more efficient government, we have smart city initiatives. We have lots of initiatives, the city's moving forward. You know, EV is just one idea, but there are others, there are AI, there's all kinds of stuff that's coming out. So I think we do have the opportunity to look at how do we address and not increasing taxes, at the same time getting our things done without, you know, without cutting the programs, okay? Without increasing the cost, which is through technology. Without increasing costs, that means we don't have to cut the program because we don't have to cut the money, cut the cost. So I would like to take that approach, which is interesting what you're talking about. We recommend the pluses, the possibilities that will achieve our goals without having to increase the tax, without having to cut the programs.
So you know, you know what, you've heard some comments on opinions of the legislative agenda that we have originally had and we're looking at the new legislative session, which you've just introduced and given us information on. If you can just take those notes down so that when we do start working on our new legislative agenda, that we can include some of that information and talk about it.
Absolutely. We do have, we do have language about smart mobility and autonomous vehicle technologies, so that is certainly included in our legislative agenda. And we will monitor that legislation as it comes out this session.
Are we going to have a chance to renew our legislative agenda this year?
Typically, we don't renew it, however, as bills come up and new issues come up, I think Katie and Janice will be back to talk with you as they go through the process. So you'll definitely have more conversation on some of these issues.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Deputy Mayor, did you have some comments or questions?
I don't have anything besides saying thank you so much for a very informative presentation. City Council, one of our main jobs is to present the city and work with our state representative to get the funding that we ask. As usual, you prepare us for that, so we are looking forward to those meetings and calling and testimony. Thank you to Councilmember Nguyen-House for his testimony today. So we're looking forward to your help and support for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, what's next, City Manager?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Deputy Mayor. We have one last study session item. So as you all know, our downtown in Bellevue is designated as a regional growth center. And last year, the Puget Sound Regional Council launched a monitoring and redesignation process for existing regional growth centers. So what the staff is here tonight to do is to kind of explain and provide the background on the process, what they know about it to date. And we'll cover a little bit about why we believe the city should go through the process, what the scope of that work would be, and what the engagement process would look like to undergo the redesignation work. So for, from Community Development Department, we have Emile King, our director, Tara Johnson, our planning director, and Kate Essie, our senior planner. I did it again, boy, okay. I'll turn it over to Emile.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, we'll be focusing on the downtown subarea plan and I want to offer some opening remarks just so we make sure we're all on the same page for what we're asking you to initiate tonight. So the downtown subarea plan is part of Volume Two of the city's comprehensive plan and it focuses on the policy direction for the 410-acre downtown subarea and just on that area. Volume Two of the, of the subarea plans are also called the neighborhood plans and we do talk about those for other areas such as Wilberton and Newport and other subareas. I want to differentiate that from Volume One of the comprehensive plan, which is where most of our work happened over the past couple of years on our periodic plan update. So those are the general elements and it has land use and housing and climate and environment. So that's where we did our state mandated update and the subarea plans are more detail. The downtown plan, we did not update as part of our past efforts, so this is, this would be a new targeted effort. What we're going to be talking about tonight is a, is a very specific update to the language in the downtown subarea plan and it's really necessitated by this Puget Sound Regional Council's redesignation process for regional growth centers, which downtown Bellevue is our sole regional growth center. And the PSRC or Puget Sound Regional Council area is doing this for all regional growth centers and they span across the four county area that's King, Kitsap, Pearson, Stahomish. I want to say our downtown plan is in a very good place. This is not a significant update that we're doing, this is a fine tuning and it's not going to change the overall vision or policy direction that's in our well-functioning downtown subarea plan. We do continue to expect downtown to see about 40% of our housing growth over the next 20 years and about 55% of our job growth over the next 20 years. Staff is asking council for consideration to initiate work on the update. It would be amended to meet the base requirements of the redesignation process that we'll describe to you in more detail tonight. Work would occur as part of the Planning Commission's annual comprehensive, comprehensive plan amendment process, so that is a known process that the commission, the council, and the public are aware of. And this work would not be done as part of the overall comp plan update because we didn't have details on it. So if we had known more details from PSRC, clearly we would have done it. Now's the time for us to do it as we move along. The agenda tonight, we'll do a bit on the background of the PSRC redesignation process. We will talk about the scope of the update and it includes types of data, maps, and targeted policies to be updated or added. And then finally, we'll talk about the community engagement process, including the Planning Commission's schedule. Commission's schedule.
So we're going to start off with a little bit of context setting and background on the update. Some of you may, may recall, our downtown subarea plan was certified in 2020 by the Puget Sound Regional Council. So we went through that process, and that was in response to PSRC kind of amending their center requirements. But since then, as Emil said, PSRC started this new process, this redesignation and monitoring process, and the criteria has been amended slightly to align with Vision 2050. We'll go into more detail about what the targeted scope entails, but our subarea plan also would align with some of the larger changes we made as part of the periodic update in Volume One of the comprehensive plan. The redesignation process, as Emil alluded to, will evaluate all the regional centers, so we'll see what progress other regional centers have made, and then each center will have to go through a similar process. This is, again, a very targeted update to demonstrate that downtown Bellevue's regional center is meeting all the PSRC requirements. I'm going to turn things over to Kate to walk us through the details on the scope.
So the scope is, is this one working? Okay. So the scope is broken into three categories. The largest group of edits is updating the data to align with the adopted growth targets and the current situation of downtown. It was, the narrative was last, did a, last big update in 2017, and 2017 was a long time ago. Not in the number of years, but in life experience. So, oops, go back one. The next area is updating the, the plan around equitable engagement. We don't expect that policies will be updated, but we have updated policies in Volume One in the citywide comprehensive plan to ensure equitable engagement, and we will update the narrative of the downtown plan to explain how inclusive engagement will be included in the, in the engage, with any engagement that we do around the downtown plan. The third area has the most bullets, but will likely be the smallest number of edits. The first one is to add or perhaps just amend the existing map to show current environmental and transportation infrastructure, which is a new requirement. And then adding or amending policies to align with direction in the adopted citywide comp plan, but providing more detail on how Bellevue will address that in the downtown. So in particular, commercial and residential displacement, there might be some special ways that we would address that in, in downtown because we're expecting such a large percentage of the growth in downtown. Planning for people of color, low-income households, and historically underserved communities in the downtown. Again, we have policies in Volume One. There might be some details that we could add or, or just amend policies to address that. And then reducing the impact on the environment. And like I said, we have strong policies in Volume One to address these items. This scope is really focused on identifying additions or amendments that are specific to the downtown comment, context.
So we want to conclude the portion of the presentation, just focus on the schedule and then a little bit on the process. So as Emil mentioned, this is going to be part of our 2025 comprehensive plan amendment cycle that goes through council launch. Similarly, you launched neighborhood area planning a few months ago, so those two plans for Crossroads and Newport are also part of the 2025 comprehensive plan amendment cycle. We're anticipating that it'll move forward through the Planning Commission process in Q2 of the year, followed by a public hearing with the Planning Commission on all three neighborhood area plans or subarea plans. Following that, there'll be a Planning Commission recommendation, which will, which will move forward to council for council action at the end of the year. And then, of course, there'll be ongoing community engagement throughout the process. So in terms of engagement, equitable engagement is a significant component of this process as well. We'll be really emphasizing, you know, how we disseminate information. We're going to be really working with our key stakeholders, residents in the downtown, businesses, as well as in surrounding neighborhoods. So ensure that they're all included as part of our engagement process. So with that, staff is asking council to consider providing direction to initiate work on starting amendments to the downtown subarea plan to really respond to PSRC's redesignation and monitoring process criteria so that we can maintain downtown Bellevue as a regional growth center.
We're good? All right, great. Thank you for the presentation. So this is not as complicated as it seems. We've already been a regional growth center. They've just put in new parameters that we need to beef up our data and some of our policies to maintain that designation, right? Okay. So Deputy Mayor, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Emil, Tara, and Kate for this update. And I love the differentiation between the comp plan, Volume One, subarea plan, Volume Two, that you started this conversation with Emil. I have two small suggestions slash question is, the low income and a small business displacement is going to be something that is really applied to downtown. When you are going to do those Planning Commission session, can you provide us with what lesson learned we have from other cities or that they apply the same team, they had the same issue, and what we can learn from them? I think that would be a great lesson that we can get from other cities. The other suggestion I have or question is, we talk about specific engagement strategies in the, in the package, but didn't, but there was not a specific methods to engage this underrepresented group effectively? So I'm sure you are working on that, so I hope I can see, we can see all those very good way that we can reach to those people that we usually don't hear from them. Thank you, Mayor. Those are my two comments, questions, suggestions.
You know, I had also intended to ask you to make a motion, just to have one on the table.
Yes, let me just make the motion. I move to initiate work on updating the downtown subarea plan to respond to PSRC's redesign, redesignation criteria to maintain downtown as a regional growth center as part of the 2025 comprehensive plan amendments.
Second.
Great. Okay, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Very straightforward. So, and I think, you know, the work itself seems pretty straightforward. The scope seems somewhat narrow. So as much as anything, just kind of updating data. So, and I don't, as you mentioned, obviously, we probably won't have many, if any substantive changes. And it fits, obviously, with the comprehensive plan to sustain downtown's designation as a regional growth center. I know that's something that we hear a lot about, the community's very clear that growth should occur in the, in our growth center. It's not exclusively downtown. All neighborhoods in parts of the city have to support growth. We have, as you mentioned, the neighborhood planning going on in Crossroads and Newport, and is exciting and will be impactful. So I'm all in favor of moving this forward and kind of taking these next steps. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think that this is necessary, so it's just no, it's status quo, we need to do this. So I support it. The only question I have is that, I think we had some discussion, I don't know whether it applies to this specific or not, that, you know, when we have a downtown comp plan, right? And we have now a subarea plan, do we need to go through this process? I mean, we, we, I think it's a given. We should recognize it should be consistent, right? So is this absolutely necessary? Or it's just another process to affirm? Because the question that's raised by Deputy Mayor is correct. If you, we need to do that. We need to have stakeholders, but that should all have been done, you know, when you did the comp plan, right? How do you do, unless you have new elements that came up, then we can amend it. So this is not, you talk about underserved communities. What, what do you mean by that? How, how do you do that? Do we, do I, do we justify to do this? Because we do have a need to look at underserved communities, so.
Yeah, thanks for those comments, Councilmember Lee. A number of the topics that, that Kate and Tara went over, we did discuss as part of the periodic plan update, so things like underserved communities. So our, our community and the commission is familiar with those, those terms. We did talk with PSRC about us doing the minimum necessary to meet their new redesignation. So there, there may be some pieces that we draw from Volume One and put it into Volume Two, just to make sure that we're redesignated, but a lot of the heavy lifting has happened already as far as understanding these topics, and we're doing some, some fine tuning in Volume Two in downtown.
Yeah, so the intent is the same, and hopefully the process will be so. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Newan House?
Thank you, Mayor. No questions for me. Thank you so much for the debate. Look forward to learning more about the engagement process and the success of that, as well as the Planning Commission's recommendation as we go forward from here. But we need to do this work and look forward to seeing what we come back with. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. I'm excited about this as well, to make sure that we align and absolutely get to retain the designation. Couple of things I, I really think is important. You're right, lots have changed since 2017 in terms of data. In 2017, Amazon wasn't, wasn't even a thing, right? That didn't happen until, I think, the end of 2018. And so really getting that updated. I agree with Deputy Mayor. I think that really looking at mitigating the displacements, it's something that we have talked about, but have yet to find the secret sauce that actually helps us to do that. So whatever we can do to better understand what's possible there. Also like the fact that we're looking at adjacent neighborhoods, because certainly as we were working on our comp plan in the last couple of years, a lot of discussions about the outskirts of the downtown and how that might fit. My one question is, you know, since the 2018 plan, we have now a curb management plan that's been adopted, and I'm, I would like to better understand how, in looking at kind of a, a refresh of our downtown plan, will the, the curb management plan play into just kind of taking a look to make sure there's good dovetail and alignment there in the transportation curb management space?
Yeah, you know, when, when the curb management topic was at the policy phase, there were a number of amendments made primarily to the, to the, the transportation element. So we can keep an eye on it, but we do want to have this, this set of amendments pretty, pretty strict to the, the PSRC redesignation criteria. So we'll take a look at it, but I'm not thinking there's anything that's needed in the downtown subarea plan.
Okay. As long as you take a look, I was just thinking that that was definitely something new, that downtown is actually one of the places where we're talking about curb management and curb uses.
Yeah, I will just add that when the curb management plan moved forward, there were some policy changes to the downtown plan as part of that work, body of work, but we don't anticipate there'll be any amendments to that, to those policies.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Newan House's very succinct statement on this, and let's go forward on it. It's, I think it's just very clear, we need to do that, and it's going to be better, and we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, if this is an opportunity for us to consider incentivizing affordable business space, I would love to take that opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that's it. Thank you very much for your presentation. Yes, of course. Before we, I was like already out the door. We've had a motion, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, there you go. There's your direction. Wait a minute, I'm not done yet, Miss Deputy Mayor. So in your packet is a wonderful presentation on Intergovernmental Affairs Monthly Update, and so I, I recommend you all read it. And I just want you to know that we will not be meeting next week in honor of Martin Luther King Day, and so we will be back together on January 28th. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.